Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of Health Special Meeting Work Sessions for Wednesday, March 10, 2021. It is 1:03 PM. My name is Ty Minzer, Chair of the Board of Health. We have Vice Chair, Commissioner Carolyn Mahia and Commissioner Gary Edwards, President, as well as the County Manager, Mayor Chavez, our Director of Public Health and Social Services, Shelley Slaughter, our Environmental Health Director, Art Starry, as well as Jane Mountjoy-Vanning and Steve Peterson from our Environmental Health Group. Topic today is On-Site Sewage Management Plan, and we have two hours. And Art, with your, um, correct me if you think this is a bad approach, but my, I, I've looked at the materials very carefully and we've had meetings in the past where we've gotten off topic and haven't been able to really complete the, the goals of the meeting and where we were trying to get to. So I'm going to suggest that you, your team makes its presentation, board holds questions, then we can get into discussion on board of questions rather than interspersing those questions all along. I think we're going to potentially get off topic. Does that work for you guys?
It works for us, so just however you want to handle it.
Well, the, the tricky thing here is that a lot of the material in here is going to be reviewed for Commissioner Edwards and I, but it might be brand new to Commissioner Mahia. So we're going to have to kind of walk through this material and I'd like to, so I'm expecting it's going to take some time to do that. So I'd like to give you guys full chance to walk through this and then we'll get into, hopefully we'll have plenty of time for discussion because we have a two-hour block here.
And that, that's makes perfect sense to me. And as you indicated, this is a, trying to put this together was a bit of a challenge, recognizing that, um, the Commissioner Minzer and, or that you and Commissioner Edwards have seen a lot of this before. And Commissioner Mahia, this is going to be new stuff for her, I suspect, or at least a lot of it will be. So I can get going then and, um, so.
Chair, yeah, Chair, could I make a comment?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not the Chair.
That's okay, Art. You're still Art. I missed that when you, when you don't say, this is still Art, you know? Anyway, uh, I would make a suggestion because, uh, the Chair did mention that, uh, you know, we've been over quite a bit of this material and I, I think having been exposed to this as a new commissioner at one time, that if we deferred any questions, maybe Ty and I can sit tight because we've kind of been through this, but I think it's kind of crucial that Commissioner Mahia, when something is covered, be able to have that explained a little bit, you know, is that, does that make sense to anybody else that, boy, withholding questions for Ty and I think is fine. I do worry about losing, uh, position or something. I, I'm not saying, and this is not detrimental. This is because I've been through the darn thing. And there's a lot of stuff that we're going to cover. So I just make that suggestion. I don't know if anybody else's feels it has merit.
So I, I think there's a nuance to what you're saying that makes sense. So there's questions where I, you're trying to understand what's being presented versus topics of discussion and flights. And so I, I'm, if Commissioner Mahia is not understanding what's being presented, she should feel free then. I think that makes sense to feel free to, to ask clarifying questions. And then, you know, if you have a topic of discussion or why don't we do it this way or something? That's something maybe for the second half of the work.
I agree. A hundred percent. I think that'll make it flow way better and I would hope that.
Commissioner Mahia, just, just wave your hand and if I don't see you, just jump in.
Oh, thank you.
I, I'm not using the, you know, we don't usually use the participant list and raise hand and all that.
Okay then. So what I can do then is I'll, I'll get started here and, um, I even practiced doing the slides a little bit this morning. So I wouldn't have as many mishaps as last time. So hopefully things will go better. Um, so again, I'm Art Starry. I'm the Environmental Health Division Director for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And, uh, Commissioner Minzer introduced the other folks, but obviously there's Shelley who's here. Uh, we broke her away from COVID for a few minutes. And then Steve Peterson, who's our Program Manager and Jane Mountjoy-Vanning, um, who's a supervisor with our program. And those two spend a lot of time dealing with the septic system stuff in addition to me. And I, I do want to welcome Commissioner Mahia to her first briefing on septic systems and septic system management. Uh, this probably won't be the last. Um, since I've been here, if there was a single topic, since I've been Director, that's taken most of my time, it has been this. And so hopefully she won't have to spend, devote nearly as much of her time to it as I have. But, um, wanted to make that quick introduction and, and also if there's any questions that you have afterwards, you want to, you hear something or you want some history lesson or learn more about, uh, different things that people are doing, um, Steve, Jane and I have been doing this for a long time and we'd be happy to, to provide any information you want or have an individual work session or briefing. Um, our time is yours if you want it.
Thank you.
Um, so I will now try to share my screen. Whoops, here we go. And that one. So are you guys seeing that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, but, um, so thank you again for having us here today. And this is a follow-up to actually a couple of different briefings, but the most recent one was in November. On the, uh, we were talking about water quality issues and onsite sewage management. And so, uh, we, we've come back again and we'll try to, uh, provide some history and, uh, some information and hopefully then take us to the point where we can have some discussion about what do we want to do next? And, um, so the topics for today are kind of briefly going over what the problem is, you know? So why are we spending so much time on onsite sewage systems? And I won't get into too much of the history there. Um, the, there's an onsite sewage management plan that the county is required to have. It was most recently updated in 2016. It was actually, it took about two years to do that. So it'll be going over at a high level, some of the recommendations there and, um, and where we are in the process as far as trying to implement them. Public process, um, at the conclusion, actually all throughout 2016 and even the year before, there was a large public process. Community meetings, hearings and things. So we'll, uh, highlight some of the things that we learned there. And again, how that led to where we currently are as far as trying to implement the plan. Current status, how we're doing. We've got some slides and I know the Commissioner Minzer and Commissioner Edwards have seen some of these before, but I think they're, they're worth showing again to show how our, how successful we've been in trying to accomplish the requirements, uh, in the plan and, uh, how to comply with state law. Again, kind of how are, how we're doing compares to what some of the standards are that are in the state. And just kind of a summary of at least where our, um, staff and I think we are and, um, kind of some key findings that I guess we'd have. And, and then we can proceed, I guess, with discussions about where we would want to go from here. We've outlined three options. There's nuances to, to any of the three that we could, um, to go on, but these, I, we provided three that, uh, we hope will be useful for discussion and, um, help us, help, uh, you as the policymakers decide if you have a, an interest in taking this forward one way or the other. Uh, so the first issue is, you know, kind of what's the problem here? And really it gets down to, we have a lot of onsite sewage systems in Thurston County. There's about, well, the latest total as of, uh, January 15th, is we have 5,400, 673 of them and they generate about 12 million gallons per day of wastewater. And that's about the same as what the Lot wastewater treatment plant does, the, the downtown plant does. So they, you know, it's kind of the same. It's, they're dispersed all over the county, but there's about the same amount of volume of wastewater there. And we've seen in the past, and there's, uh, ample evidence to show this going back a long time, that when you improperly dispose of sewage, uh, or when fail, septic systems fail and they fail in vulnerable areas, you can have problems and they're causing illness. There's lots of, um, bacteria and viruses and things in wastewater that can cause illness. And that's contributed to shellfish downgrades, which is frankly, the driver for the, the onsite sewage management plan requirements that we have. It goes back to some state law changes in 2005 and 2006 that mandate that we have these plans and they were driven very strongly by the, by the need to protect shellfish harvesting areas in Thurston County and, and throughout the state. Beach closures, we've had contaminated wells where we've had, uh, actually there's a couple of good examples. One we just showed you recently where, water wells have either been taken offline or they've had to make major investments in conversions of septic systems to protect water supplies. The nutrients from onsite sewage systems are contributing to, um, low dissolved oxygen levels in our marine waters. And, um, uh, as Commissioner Minzer and Commissioner Edwards know, from having been on the Lot Board or been alternates for the Lot Board, that's a big policy driver and could potentially be very expensive to try to solve that problem for lower butt inlet. And then also algae blooms, uh, that, uh, the nutrients from onsite systems can be contributing to algae blooms. And as with most of these things, it's not just onsite sewage systems. It's a combination of things that contribute to, to our surface water and groundwater pollution issues in the county, but septic systems in many instances have been significant contributors.
Art.
Yes.
I do have a question on the first slide. So what constitutes as a failing or an improperly functioned sewage system?
Okay, um, hang on here. We're zipping ahead because I have a slide for that. You're getting into the secret slides now. Hang on. There we go. Um, what's a failure? So here's the, kind of the paraphrasing state law, that a failure is when a septic system is either discharging improperly treated wastewater to the surface of the ground or surface water. When it causes sewage to back up into a home or into whatever structure it's serving. And also there's a method that we use, which we'll talk about a little bit later on about dye tracing. Uh, when we use a method where we put, uh, fluorocene dye down the drain or down a toilet and it surfaces and there's also a high level of, of bacteria from wastewater present, then that's also a failure. So it's, it's basically sewage surfacing on the ground or breaking out onto a bank and contaminating water. When it's backing up in a home or when we find it through, um, these special evaluation methods called dye tracing and, um, so is that making any sense?
Yes. Um, so for, for the, the dye tracing, I mean, does someone call whenever there's, there's, how does, how did, I guess, how are we informed of, of a failing septic and that it's?
So there's a, a number of ways that happens and I'll invite, uh, Steve and Jane to chime in because both of their, their programs get involved with doing, um, compliance investigations or providing assistance or doing dye traces. But, but it happens, one of, uh, there's a few different ways. Uh, one sometimes or that is a, when they're have, when a septic system is being pumped or maintained, uh, the, the pumper or the maintenance person will find that there's, there's something wrong with it and they do further evaluation. They find out that the, the system, often the drain field is backing up and failing. And so they'll, they'll fix it for that. Sometimes it's, uh, it's just because the property owner or the homeowner realizes something's wrong. And so they come in and they get a, basically a voluntary repair permit. Uh, we, we weren't involved with it at all. Sometimes we receive, we find failures as a result of a complaint. A neighbor might say that they see something suspicious or they're concerned about stuff and maybe something, there's an odor and we'll, uh, receive that complaint. And we have staff that go out and investigate it and they confirm that there's a failure and then those folks are needing to repair their onsite systems. And another method is, uh, by doing assessments or surveys of using dye trace methods, where in our, some of our marine watershed areas, uh, because failing septic systems can have such a significant impact on surface waters and shellfish harvesting in particular, um, homeowners in those areas are required to have a dye trace. And that's the most sensitive, uh, demanding method for evaluating an onsite sewage system that, that we know of anyways. And that's where during the wet season, when septic systems are stressed the most, uh, dye is put down, uh, two fixtures in the home, the toilet and another fixture somewhere, usually a sink. And then we look to see if it surfaces. And there's some pretty sophisticated methods that, um, I guess we can take some pride in that we developed most of them here in Thurston County or had a big piece of it, uh, where we can, uh, retrieve even low concentrations of fluorocene dye and determine whether, um, whether a system's failing. And so again, we've, we established the pathway between dye that was flushed down a drain, uh, that it surfaced somewhere. And then we follow up that dye evaluation by taking a bacteriological water sample. Is just because dye makes it out doesn't mean that there's a public health concern. But the presence of bacteria at a high concentration or high level is what, that's the kind of the final piece that determines whether a system's failing.
Thank you.
Making any sense?
It is. Thank you.
And, uh, I see that Jane and Steve, they don't look like they're quivering too much. So I mean, must not have made too many mistakes. Okay. So now, cover your eyes if this stuff makes you sick when I go through these slides quickly. Okay. So you've seen all the slides. Now do we need to go any further? Trying to be funny.
New York, just.
Yes.
Sorry.
Be mindful of the time. So allow the commissioners to have questions at the end.
Okay. See, I'm trying to, yeah, sorry I take too long sometimes. So, uh, other things that have happened is we've had, even in Thurston County, we've had, uh, surface lake sewage cause illnesses due because they contaminated shellfish and people ate the shellfish and they got sick. Uh, the, the one with a little red circle around it. That's in Thurston County, the Noble, Noble Beach area. And as you know, I think folks know that the shellfish filter water and if bacteria are present or viruses are present in the water, then they can concentrate them and make people sick. Shellfish think it's just fine, but when people eat the shellfish, they get a, they don't like it. And what the problem with this whole onsite sewage management si- uh, situation has been is trying to find the right balance between, being proactive, trying to work with people to find failures early, uh, and to take protective measures or kind of being proactive. And, or do we wait until things, problems find out? You know, so it's kind of the show up. That's the, uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it sort of model. And that really is a tension and the work that we've done over the years, um, it's pretty hard to find an, a, an agreement on things. There's prob, the closest we've come has been the Henderson and Esqually area where there's a, a lot of work, a, a pretty clear problem to be defined or defined in a relationship between onsite systems and people understood, understood that. But, um, you know, the big problem is if we, if, when systems of course fail is not only can there be a public health issue, but they're really expensive to fix, or at least a lot of times they can be. The average cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of $17,000, at least when we did our loan program and they can easily exceed that. So the, another issue is perception of fairness and, um, depending, and not surprising, depending on who you ask, what, what's fair will be different. But Jane could talk about this if you'd like, but, um, we have, you know, uh, people who have systems where they're required to, and I'll just show you an example here, required to have a renewable permit and pay annual fees and undergo dye tracing. They might think that, um, the, another septic system in another part of the inlet that seems a whole lot like theirs and has a similar topography and, and geology, that they should be treated the same way, but they're not. And, um, I just, you know, drew little circles here where, you know, I'm not pointing to any particular septic system, but these are indicative of the, the differences between what a, a property owner in Henderson has to do and what someone else over in Elderton Inlet might have to do with the same type of onsite system. And so people will ask, is that fair? Or, um, also someone might ask, uh, they've got a, um, an expensive system, a new one that has, uh, required monitoring and maintenance. It's got maybe even disinfection and, and they have to undergo, um, annual testing. And they might be wondering why their neighbor who has an old system that hasn't been evaluated as best they can tell in ever, forever, why, they're wondering why that might be fair. If you have, Jane would have other examples if you're interested. She, because she's the one who gets the questions about that a lot. The, uh, state law we mentioned, or I mentioned, um, has requirements for onsite sewage systems. And I listed the, the WAC and the RCW up on the top if you, uh, really want to read about them. And there's a long list of things that you need to do, but in, when you kind of wash it all down, what they're, what we're really supposed to be trying to do is find and fix failing septic systems. Uh, the idea is to have programs in place where they can be found promptly and repaired. And also to make sure that people have the information they need to monitor and maintain their systems to avoid failures. The plan or requirements in state law are that we're also supposed to try to find areas where septic systems have the greatest impact or they pose the greatest risk to public health than has, see if we need special programs there or to, I think the word is have plans or measures that are commensurate with the risk they pose. And then to have, um, I said, and have appropriate areas and education and outreach is a big piece of that. The plan that we have, um, recommends that, um, we continue the, the successful programs that we've had, including the Henderson and Esqually areas, but it also recognizes that, um, complex systems. And, um, there are some that are quite complex. They have electronic controls. They have regular monitoring that's necessary. They have regular testing that's necessary. They might even have a disinfection unit associated with it to make sure that the sewage, uh, before it is discharged is, uh, has very low bacteria levels. They might even have, uh, components that reduce the amount of, it's called by a lot, or the strength of the waste, but there can be lots, lots of components to them. And, and so those systems need to be regularly monitored and maintained. The plan also recommends that we have, identify other areas where onsite sewage systems pose a, a risk to, uh, the environment or to public health. That might be, they've specifically recommended Eld Inlet and Summit Lake is an example. And to regularly provide onsite, um, education and, uh, septic system owners countywide. And, um, here's some examples of things we've done in the past to try to, to try to do that. Some are focused on particular areas and sometimes, uh, we've got things that are more broadly based. And so that's the, those are the sorts of things we've done at workshops and, and brochures and websites. The plan also wants to provide, make sure that we have data systems that are in place, um, to make sure that we can keep track of whether someone's monitoring or maintaining their system and who owns it and, and where it's located and, and make that information readily available to both the property owner and to the general public if they need it. And that also recommends that we have, um, sustained funding for it. And what the plan recommended is that there be a charge assessed to each septic system owner in Thurston County. And in 2016, that was estimated to be $45 per septic system per year. Because, uh, that was modeled again after the Henderson and Esqually programs where those charges are levied via the property tax statement. And after the advisory committee, actually for both Henderson and Esqually, and for the onsite sewage management plan, looked at all the options, they determined that, you know, if, if you're going to go ahead and charge people for a program like this, you might as well do it the most efficient and effective way. And the property tax statement is the most effective and efficient way. And when we do billings, um, individually, it takes multiple attempts usually to get someone to pay and to come, and to do what's needed. So this is a, you know, again, it's, they wrestled with it for quite a bit, but then again, in the end, they said, you know, if, if you really are going to have the program, you, let's not make the health department bill collectors, let's have them do what they're good at. Let's have them, you know, help prove, help people maintain their systems, not, you know, not, um, be setting up a billing agency. So that's it at very high level. Are there, Mr. Mahia or others have questions?
Yes.
Oh, maybe I shouldn't over, I, does anybody other than Commissioner Edwards have?
But I'll let Commissioner Mahia go first if she'd like.
Um, go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Out of the 54,000 systems that we have, how many failures did we have last year?
Last year? I could pull that up. I could tell you how many repair permits we had, but I, I don't have that data right in front of me. We, it's a couple hundred repair permits typically per year. And then Jane could tell you through the dye tracing methods. And, um, we have to do an annual or a semi-annual report to the State Department of Health that reports how many problems we found in Henderson and Esqually. And I, I don't have that number right in front of me, but.
Okay.
I might.
I, I would say that last year would not have been a, a typical year because we cut our, um, dye tracing time. We, we stopped it midway through because of COVID. We didn't want to enter people's homes at the point where we didn't have masks. We didn't have all the, uh, equipment we needed to do that safely. So we want to go back to a couple of years.
That, that does make sense. Uh, but also I would say there's probably more reasons to have lots of failures because everybody was staying home for the, you know, that long period of time. So.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's an interesting contrast and we.
Right.
Right now, today, we don't have, have good information on that other than permit data. And I could pull that up. I just don't have it right in front of me.
I, I think as we talk about this going down the road, that's going to be a pertinent piece of the information that we're going to need. Uh, another question would be, I believe in, I don't know if it was 17, 18 when it was, but somewhere along the line, the trailer parks were getting a free ride. Some of them had as many as, uh, 100 hookups. And, uh, they were only paying the one flat fee or something. And we adjusted that somehow. So we're, we're more fairly charging. Did we also add to the count? Some of those places had as many as 100 onsite systems. And is that number included in that 54,000 or would have it have been? Because they were only having to pay for two systems, uh, before we raised the rates. So I'm just wondering, did we also adjust the count? Are there more than 54,000 because of just that one factor?
So I'll let Jane correct me, but we, the, the number reflects the number, however many there are, whether they're in a mobile home park or not. So we've always had a pretty good tally of the numbers. The, the big change that made when, was made when you, um, re-approved the onsite system was how we charged for those. So as you indicated, uh, in the past, that property that had several mobile homes on it would have been charged just one flat fee. When the, uh, when the ordinance was adopt, I mean, modified, uh, in 2017, we then added an additional $10 for each onsite system on that property. So that, that was the, the change. And, um, I think that, as you said, I think that's a much fairer way of addressing that issue.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to break in. I, I really want questions after the presentation's been done. And we're not even close to the end of the presentation. Well, that's all questions.
Okay. Oh, I thought we were supposed to ask. I'm sorry. I wouldn't.
I, I broke the rules. Sorry.
Sorry about that, Chair. I, I thought we got to that point. Okay.
So when we went through the public process, um, and we ended up learning at least, and I went through the notes and Steve and Jane and I went through the notes. There are lots of notes if you are interested in reading them, um, that the, there seemed that the level of concern with the onsite sewage management plan seemed to vary geographically. The folks in the rural area, in particular, the, the southern rural part of the county had questions. We're wondering, you know, what's all the fuss about? And some folks seem to think that, okay, maybe there's a need for a, a, a program or more intense activities up in the northern shellfish growing areas that they didn't understand or didn't appreciate, uh, that there was a need for, uh, for some of the active recommendations in the plan and the, the, the rural parts of the county. The property or the assessment, the flat fee that would be charging, be charged to everybody, there was a big concern about that by several folks. There was a big concern about that by several folks. The advisory committee felt strongly that actually that the, there should be a flat fee charged to everybody. And they recognized that someone in the rural county might feel differently about that. But they felt that, again, their philosophy, their thought was that that was the fair way to do it. They felt like a lot of the people in the northern county were already having to pay a lot for main, you know, the type of system they have or what they pay. They thought that was the best method and and not saying they're right or wrong, but that's what they strongly felt. There were concerns. We all, as a result of that, the board at the time asked us to develop an alternative structure that had a tiered fee structure. That was charged the most to the marine areas and charged less for the rural areas. Where there, we wouldn't be doing dye tracing and as much to basically match the charges better to the activities and services that would be provided. I'll show you a slide here. That 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 didn't assuage the fear either. We had very well attended and I call them energetic hearings. There may be some other words for them. And we had.
I remember those energetic meetings.
Yeah, I I remember one and well, several, but. And I just note that what seems like when you talk about septic systems and fees, you can always draw a crowd. So if you. But the other thing, and this, I I attended some of these workshops during the same time as we were having the public process for the septic system management plan as we had. Some workshops in the rural parts of the county that were paid for with grants. They were extremely popular. If you look at the evaluations of those workshops, they're always really positive. The people really like those. So there's, I guess, shows there's a contrast or kind of different ends of the spectrum. And again, what we learned is that people will show up and they have opinions about septic system management and fees. And while there were some, several people who voiced support for the proposed programs and fees. A lot of people, the majority at least, who voiced their opinions at the hearing had concerns about that. And so I, I couldn't find the actual newsprint version of the paper, but I found this electronic picture and headline. That was from the time. So as a result of that, what happened was the the board that was in place at two thousand sixteen adopted the plan. And then ultimately, the, it was, wasn't fully funded. The the charges and fees that were recommended within the plan were not implemented. So what we're doing now is we're implementing it as best we can when we get grants and things to do that. And we're, we're quite successful at that, but it's, it's a slow process. And grant, obtaining, managing and reporting on grants is very time intensive, as Jane can tell you. And it's, it's, it, and the other part of it is it gets, we talked about being proactive versus reactive. Grant, getting grants to solve problems is reactive. It it, it takes years. The money that we're using today, that a couple of weeks, maybe it was a week ago, you re-extended a grant. That we started in two thousand sixteen to get money for that Dobbs problem that we knew was coming. It didn't, we didn't arrive really until two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And then it's taking a lot, it's continuing to take time to be able to do the work envisioned by that process. So that's just an example of grants. But, but again, it is allowing us to work on Dobbs Creek. It's allowing us to do education and outreach, intensive, more intensive education and outreach elsewhere in the county. So just to let you know exactly what it looks like where where all the onsite systems are. There, that's where they are. The green dots represent onsite systems. I I should also tell you that these are the ones that, I guess, these are all onsite sewage systems, but if you look at the way they're being managed in the state. We handle ones that are up to thirteen thousand five hundred gallons per day. Is that right, Steve?
Three thousand five.
Three thousand five hundred. Sorry, that was the old number.
Yep.
I'm showing my age again. So up to about ten, ten connections or, you know, a small store or small restaurant. And so when we're looking at how we're doing, again, we've got fifty four thousand septic systems. Seventy two percent of them don't have any particular requirements for monitoring and maintenance. They, the, the home, we provide some basic education materials. We provide those workshops that I mentioned when we can get grant funding to do them. But they mostly are, again, they're on their own and often what triggers monitoring and maintenance is when properties sell or transfer. There's something called the time of transfer program. The other twenty eight percent, and those would be the ones in the Henderson and Isqually areas and also the ones that are complex. They, they're required to have some, a renewable permit or a renewable operational certificate. And typically every three years, they are reminded what they need to do to monitor and maintain their systems. And here's a table and I won't go into all sorts of details, but it it gives you some of the things that are going on with with the different areas. And so the column on the left, Henderson and Isqually, the one with all the check marks. In those areas where they're paying special charges, they get renewable certificates, they have dye tracing, they get workshops. We have a really popular workshop series that we do that allows people to be, learn how to monitor and maintain their systems. And actually, the, something that a professional would normally have to do, they're allowed to do it. And as strange as it seems, people sign up to learn how to measure scum and sludge in a septic tank and evaluate levels. And and all that stuff. It's, we've had well over three thousand people participate in that class. And it's a, about a five and a half or six hour class. Uh, we offer riser rebates, meaning the making a lid that people can put on their septic tanks to make it easier to maintain. All that stuff goes on within Henderson. And you can look at this more. We've got that third column, enhanced education is where we've been able to get grant funds to focus on other high-risk areas like Cotton Inlet and Eld Inlet. To provide people with more information on their systems. So what all that translates to, kind of the measuring stick or the evaluation method for onsite systems though, is whether the the property owners are being, maintaining them regularly. In other words, how are they, the term is current on inspections. And in, that means that for most systems, that they have to evaluate them at least every three years. And when you look at that last row on this chart, you'll see that the percentage that are have current inspections varies dramatically depending on the type of system and where they are in the county. From thirty five percent for standard systems. Uh, in just kind of anywhere in the county where they don't have special programs or where we don't have special programs to ninety percent in Henderson and Isqually, which, and this is an updated number. I think, I think Shelley yesterday reported ninety one percent, but our last, we lost a percent in the last report. So. So that's just a summary of it. And here's some graphics that show this basically the same information. In our marine recovery areas, we're at ninety percent and that's, I think, the highest percentage in any Puget Sound area for a, for a large area. There might be, there's, I know some counties have a couple of itty bitty little programs and when you're talking about twelve thousand septic systems to have ninety percent of them being properly monitored and maintained, it's, that's a big accomplishment. And then the others were at eighty seven percent. And outside of the areas where operational certificates are required or where they don't have special systems. We're at about thirty five percent. And the good news is the numbers have increased since two thousand sixteen. And I think that's a result of some of our special education and outreach efforts and perhaps just increased awareness by people. But it's still a long way from the, from the ninety percent we're seeing in Henderson and Isqually. And here's some maps that show the, kind of give you a, a picture of how things are going. The one on the right is Henderson Inlet and there's, believe it or not, there's, you know, some six thousand something property is identified there that have onsite sewage systems. And the ones that are green are ones that are current with op, their monitoring and maintenance. And you can see the vast majority of them are green. The red ones are not, are not in compliance. And the blue ones are on sewer, so don't, don't worry so much about them. On the left side is Eld Inlet, so, you know, similar shellfish harvesting area. Probably what's even more interesting is it's not, anyways, don't go there, sorry. But you'll see that there's not nearly as many green spots on the Eld side as there are in Henderson. And again, we've, we've spent quite a bit of effort through using grant funds to provide education and outreach efforts at Eld, but still haven't moved the needle as far as as Henderson. So we re, we produce these maps and I say we, I mean Jane and Joel, who works for our, you know. Helps do data management for us. He's actually in central services or IT. They do these every six months, but they, the Henderson ones looked the same for quite a while. The other thing, just as an indication of how we're doing, is the good news though, is we don't have any threatened shellfish areas right now. A couple of years ago, you would have seen one of these little triangle things down here in Eld Inlet. But the good news is water quality is, has improved some, so we're not a threatened area anymore there. That's, that's good news. If you go years and years ago, there was a shellfish downgrade in Eld Inlet. And after a lot of significant effort by a lot of community partners, including us. The water quality improved to reopen those closed areas. That was a big accomplishment in the eighties. So just to give you a comparison, to compare what we, where we are to what the state and others think. The expectations for septic system management, if you look at the vital signs from the Puget Sound Partnership are that we should have ninety five, ninety five percent of the septic systems in high-risk areas. Or marine recovery areas, that's a term for the, the shellfish growing areas, should have current inspection. So we're close with, with Henderson and Isqually, but not nearly so close elsewhere. If you look at how the rest of the state is doing though, they're on about forty eight percent and I'll have a chart that shows that next. The good news is that the, across the state, the numbers have improved over time. And there's been a lot of effort to do this and as I mentioned before, you know, systems are supposed to be looked at, most of them every three years. And here's the chart that shows that. This is from the state. And you can see they're right around, dropped a little bit now around forty eight percent. The number would be a little bit lower if we took the Thurston County stuff out of it. So the conclusions are, at least that we've drawn from looking at our different stuff, is that we have really good programs in Henderson and Isqually. They take a tremendous amount of effort. I think it's worth it, but it, there's a lot of time and money involved with those. And the one thing to recognize is when we're talking about those marine recovery areas and and some of our programs is where the big focus has to do with impacts to surface water, to shellfish harvesting areas, to lakes and things. And when you look at the standards for shellfish harvesting areas, they're talking about bacteria. We aren't doing as much in effect evaluating impacts on groundwater. And there's some reasons for that, but just, just to recognize that a lot of the focus for this is protecting surface waters. Uh, when I think the Eld and and Cotton Inlet education and outreach effort shows is that we can move the needle some, but we're, but just education and outreach alone and even incentives, I didn't highlight that very well. You know, having fi, funding to help people buy risers to help make inspecting their systems easier. To have low interest loans in case they fail, those sorts of things. They, they help improve monitoring and maintenance, but they don't, don't get nearly as far as having the more regulatory program that we have in Henderson and Isqually. And there also is many, I guess she'll say incentives that we have at Henderson and Isqually. Mentioned before, but some people think things are unfair. And I think the, our observation is that having sustained funding really does make the programs more efficient and easier to manage. The amount of time that Jane and our staff, our fiscal staff spend tracking grants and things, it's tremendous. And doing reporting and it's not to say that we shouldn't have to do that if the state's giving us money, but it's, it, it does take a lot of effort. The other thing. Is someone saying something or? The other thing is that, or a couple more things, is that we found that in the case of Henderson and Isqually that the people understood, when they understood and accepted the program, understood the program, understood why, what septic systems have to do with water quality issues. They accepted it. The history on that is when we had the public hearings in the mid two thousands about that, we went from a packed room of fairly upset people who were at the, the new, at that time was the new Fairgrounds building. The Expo Center to at the public hearing at the end, we had about seventeen people and almost all of them were in favor of it. So I think that shows how, again, understanding and recognizing the relationship can be, be very persuasive. And then like you saw with the pictures for the hearings in two thousand sixteen is when people didn't understand or perceive the benefit or didn't think that if they were benefiting from it, then they, they show up and are are invoiced concerns. The other thing is we're, is that we think pick the pollution identification and correction program, which is where we can do surface water monitoring in addition to evaluation of septic systems is important. And that's been a key piece to the work that we're doing, and I should say Jane and her staff are doing in Dobbs Creek with that camping club that has issue problems. One of the things we're doing there or that we did there was do water quality testing to verify that the land use practices at the camping club were contributing to the surface water pollution. So and having that to, to augment our monitoring and maintenance activities, I think is really critical. And it also gets to some of the questions that I know Commissioner Edwards is interested in is when when we have reports that say that a, a surface water body is impaired, it helps us figure out. You know, what is the problem? What is the source? Is it septic systems? Is it agriculture? Is it, you know, land management practices? Is it forestry? Having that really does help us work with people to solve the problem and make sure that we aren't asking people to do things that aren't warranted or, you know, spending time and effort on things that really aren't the, really aren't the source of the problem. So that's kind of the, the history and where we are. Uh, the next thing that we can go over were some ideas on how we might proceed. Provided three different options, well, one and then can have some discussion. So I don't, I don't know if Commissioner Mahia, Mahia has any questions at this stage or do you want me to proceed?
I'm just taking it all in. Please proceed.
Okay. So developed a few options here for cons, for consideration. Uh, one is the stakeholder recommended plan. So what would it take or what would it look like to try to implement that? The, a two-tier program and there's been, there's, you could have other variations of this. But the idea here is that maybe, maybe the stakeholder plan is, well, it would be, we think it would be effective to implement it. You know, is it kind of going back to the old, old saying, or I think it was Voltaire who said it, but, you know, don't let the best be the enemy of the good. You know, maybe there's a, an intermediate program that would serve the community well that wouldn't take as many resources or perhaps be as controversial. Maybe, maybe there's a, a middle ground here and that's what some of this two-tier program idea. And then of course, there's the status quo. We could continue, we have a plan. It, I think it has a lot of good recommendations in it. We could continue to try to implement that as we have the resources to, can acquire the resources to do it, but recognizing that would be a little bit slower. So again, to kind of review the stakeholder plan. The original plan was recommended with a flat fee and it would, as I highlighted earlier, or I say we highlighted earlier. Recommends that we continue the Henderson and Isqually programs because they've been very effective. People generally accept them and appreciate them. And also to have the renewable sur, permits or certificates for the large and complex systems. The plan recommends education and outreach. It also recommends that we continue to do work to identify areas where septic systems, onsite sewage systems pose the greatest risk. Public health, so it identified Eld Inlet and Summit Lake as being two areas where, where that would be, that's recommended. And improve data systems. Having access to records that are online, being able to file things easily. Being able to, you know, get, find out, get record drawings or as-built drawings of their septic systems online without having to come to the courthouse. All those things work really well and we've made, made substantial improvements in those areas in the past few years. So that's, uh, been a concerted effort with the folks at CPAD and DEV REV to be able to have some neat systems to do that, along with a, a private vendor that we, the county uses. So went through using kind of the briefing form. Jane, Steve and I developed some pros and cons for that. So the, you know, if we go with the recommended plan, it's based on some successful models. We get good good work on it. The one thing that's interesting about the plan is it recommends that that time of transfer activity, which is where people have their onsite sewage systems pumped and evaluated by a professional before it's is sold or transferred. We call it time of transfer, but it might have been called time of sale just as well. But that program to actually be paid for under the regular, the flat fee that's charged via the property tax statement. The the folks, that time of transfer program has been very valuable as far as helping identify problems. Improving our inventory of onsite systems, meaning that we know where they are. Mr. Edwards asked about that earlier. Do we how we know that? You know, where the onsite systems are for the mobile home parks, this that process, if someone sold their property provides a lot of valuable information. Not only to the purchaser, but also to us as we try to get have a better handle on on what's out there in the county. Again, the the time those programs, the marine recovery areas and things are understood, it provides sustainable funding. I won't read the rest of it. The other part of it is that the stakeholders spent a lot of time working on this, so it would honor their work. But of course, the cons for this is that it costs a lot of money. It would be probably to fully implement the plan today would be in the neighborhood of if three million dollars a year through charges, you can and you can do the math. You know, say fifty dollars times well, fifty thousand, fifty thousand, something that's almost three million dollars. And I'm assume the charge, I did do a little bit of math. If you adjusted that forty five dollars per year for inflation, it's about it's about another nine point something percent. So it'd be in the neighborhood of fifty dollars per parcel. Or per septic system, excuse me. Again, some plan elements, some of the the costs or the costs and some of the plan elements are unpopular with many. Some people say it looks a whole lot like a tax. And they, again, they don't want the services or don't appreciate them. And then, of course, we've got this little pandemic thing going on right now and depending upon when we were, if we were to try to go ahead and implement this with the economic impacts, there's a question about is the timing right? So I put that in there and then the, of course, that unfairness equity thing about, you know, is this is this the plan do the best job of kind of meeting the needs of the community and and having services and charges that relate to the to what people are paying. So stop there for a second. Two tier program then. And so this was something that kind of well, came out a bit with the public process for the plan. That one actually originally had a or the the alternative was a three tier program. But after thinking about it a little more, we thought, you know, it really, when you get down to it, people seem to understand that for green areas where where septic failing septic systems pose a risk to shellfish harvesting and and bathing beaches and water resources, where septic systems are close to lakes, especially a drinking water lake like Summit Lake. That they're, you know, they're the monitoring and maintaining systems and having systems in place to find failures quickly, that makes sense there. So having a program that focuses a lot of effort on those areas, building on the successes we've had in the past. That might that might be a a different or reasonable alternative to the the bigger county wide program. And so what this idea or the idea here is that again, the higher risk systems, including the complex systems, would be required to have renewable operational certificates and where it's appropriate dye tracing. Not dye tracing doesn't work well on inland properties. We've but on shoreline properties where there's banks and where there's runoff, it works really well in identifying failures. And so not all prop not all septic systems would be dye traced under this scenario, but the high risk ones would be. And then add areas like Summit Lake and and Eld Inlet. So the that would be the upper tier and and I don't know exactly what the the charger fee would be. The takes a lot of effort to calculate all that stuff and I and depending on what the interest of the board is, we can provide that information. Originally, as a bit of historical perspective, though, when we had the three tiered program. The charges were varied between twenty two dollars and sixty six dollars per septic system per per year, twenty two dollars for the low risk of rural, say, southern county and sixty six dollars for the septic systems in the marine areas, similar to what they would be similar to Henderson and Isqually, same same concept. So under the two tier program, though, the the remainder of the county wouldn't wouldn't be left out. They would receive education and outreach. We do a try to do a or we would need to do a better job for doing education and outreach, making sure that people have receive information on when they need to maintain their systems, you know, tracking that. So it wouldn't be required, but what we did in it would be based on what we did in the Eld area where we actually looked at our data system, found out septic systems that when they were last maintained, according to our record, sent them a reminder saying, you know, you should look at your system every three years. Our records show it had the last time was you know, six years or, you know, three or we haven't seen it forever, whatever whatever the information was, we provided that. Is that correct, Jane? She's nodding her head, yay. And so that I think was helpful. That's probably why we've seen those improvements in Eld Inlet over the years. But again, so that would be helpful. The idea would be to charge a smaller fee than via the property tax statement. Another thing which I should have put here as a bullet is, you know, trying to provide as part of the education process, providing access to some of the the more advanced class that we have for septic systems, that could be included in here that, as I mentioned before. We provide that in Henderson and Isqually. That was a recommendation that came from the citizens group that worked on developing the the plan for Henderson and Isqually. And and at first we thought it was just, okay, we're we would develop it because people requested it, but we didn't imagine anybody would be crazy enough to spend the afternoon with us and learn how to, you know, look at scum and grease and and septage. But again, we've had hundreds of classes. I don't have the exact number, probably about a hundred and fifty classes and over three thousand people have come here to to learn about septic systems. And for Commissioner Mahia, when you're when you're next time you're over here at Lily Road, we can take you on a tour of the septic park in the back of the parking lot. We actually have a park with a septic tank and a pump chamber and and other things that we think help people learn how to maintain their their septic systems and so. And the evaluations for those classes are outstanding. We actually and we do actually have people do evaluations for the classes. We aren't just, you know, having our staff talk about things and hope that it sinks in. We we have have people help, you know, tell us how well we did and where we can improve. So again, the the advantages of the pros to this sort of program is it focuses our most of our effort then on the highest priority areas or the highest risk areas. It, you know, continues with some things that have worked really well in Henderson and Isqually. It might be, I stated this negatively, I probably should have stated to be more popular with the public as opposed to re- reducing negative feedback. It does provide sustainable funding, so we wouldn't be in as as much of an having to work to obtain grants as much. There will also provide, actually for grants that require match, it would help provide opportunities for match. Provides a higher level of service to all onsite system owners. And I the assumption is or a thought would be is that you would include a pollution identification and correction or pick component to this. So we could do monitoring for you know, surface water and groundwater monitoring to see if if onsite systems are impacting areas or if corrections have been effective when when they've gone in place. The cons or the, you know, the the kind of things, reasons you might not want to do this are that there are significance in costs and services for onsite systems and it's dictated largely by the location of the onsite system. In the areas outside of the the special areas, because they wouldn't have as an intensive a monitoring component. It'd be harder to find failures. More of what we talked about earlier, where it would largely be more self-reporting. When someone thinks there's an issue, they may call and ask for assistance or get a repair permit. And the kind of the question of fairness that keeps coming up and and there's not. Again, it depends on who you are, I suppose, it's as to what's fair. So that's that's that. And the third thing is the status quo that we've been, you know, we've been doing basically for the last four years, three and a half years. And so the the good news or the the pros associated with that is that we don't generally receive a lot of, it's not very controversial at this point. Now Jane will tell you that we get phone calls from people when we send them the renewal notices for their septic systems, particularly those complex systems that are outside of the marine recovery areas and and they'll say, why me? Why, you know, why not my neighbor? Again, she'd be happy to, maybe not happy, but willing to describe some of the phone calls that she's gotten. It does keep our successful programs going, Henderson and Isqually. And, you know, again, I think it avoids some of the controversy that that would be likely if we, or at least contention that would be likely if we go forward with implementing new plans or programs. And the cons here, I think I've described a lot of these already. They rely on fees and grants paid by a small percentage of people that pay for the kind of our infrastructure. Actually, I haven't mentioned that one before. But when you look at it, the a lot of the burden for maintaining our permit systems and whatnot are by people who are doing business with us. In other words, they're they're applying for a permit. They live in Henderson and Isqually. Part of that indirect and overhead stuff that you've heard you you as commissioners know so much about covers those that permit system. So if you're not getting a permit, if you're not participating, you aren't paying. So that's another fairness question. And in the highest risk areas outside of Henderson and Isqually that, you know, the status quo makes it more difficult to find those systems. And we may have issues like the norovirus outbreak in Eld Inlet or like or makes it more likely. And it's reactive and it in it revolves a lot of work for main monitoring and maintaining grants. So that's that. One thing I do want to say, though, is again, when we're up with the septic system monitoring stuff is just recognizing that as we look at water resources for the county, septic systems are are part of the issues and I put this slide together and I could have made it a much bigger puzzle than this one, but there are a lot of issues that contribute to onsite. I mean, the surface and groundwater issues within the county and and we this is focusing on septic systems. And if we even when we come up with the perfect program, that it doesn't mean that we've solved all the the issues, I think. You've been you've heard complaints about that. And I know, you know, Commissioner Mensah and Edwards at previous briefings and things, I've heard from people about, you know, voicing concerns about other issues. And so one of the things we do are going to do, and then I guess the next slide in in response to the last briefing is we do intend to have a briefing with you about all the different county programs that are that are coming together. I remember they're talking about what we do and the issues we're facing and some of the challenges there. So you may recall that in November of last year, it actually was in June of last year. You'd asked for a briefing more on what all the different county programs are doing. And there was also a briefing on a concept called One Water. And so we will be coming back to you on that. Right now. Jennifer Davis, Tim Wilson and I are working to put together something to give you a feel for all the different things that are going on in the county scene. But that's that's coming. But anyways, just to remind you that again, that well, septic systems are part of the problem, but they're not the only problem. And solving septic systems doesn't necessarily mean we've addressed everything and someday we could talk about the work that was done in Henderson Inlet to evaluate that more carefully. There's some really good work done by ecology to evaluate that. So the next question kind of is, is where do we go from here? And be happy to discuss that. So thank you.
Thank you, Art. So I'm gonna now suggest that the commissioners kind of go around the horn a little bit, ask a question or two, and then we'll just we'll keep keep circling back because I know Commissioner Edwards and I could probably fill forty five minutes with our own questions, but we don't have that much time in this room here. So we'll just kind of go around and maybe ask your most important questions and we'll circle through it that way. Commissioner Edwards, I'll start with you.
Art, how are we doing?
Microphone.
What's that?
Your microphone.
You got it. Art, how are we doing compared to the rest of the state currently?
Well, I think overall we're doing better.
Yeah, better. Okay. I I mean, I just you don't need to break it down, but I've heard that quite a bit from the water folks. We're doing better than everybody else.
I think with the Henderson and Isqually, we're probably doing the best. I think if you look at if you look at, oh, sorry.
Okay, and and I want to compliment you on your presentation. But when you do the one water presentation for us in the future, would you list numbers on each one of the pages? Because it makes it so much easier for us taking notes that we can refer to a particular slide that you gave us some information. Just makes it a lot easier.
Okay. I will be happy to do that. And I understand that we might have some really competent slide preparers for that one. So I'll ask them to do that.
Okay, good. Now. As we move forward, I guess you know, people care. I guess that is the bottom line. We've seen that in a lot of different areas. I think in a three year period we went from out of compliance, I think was sixty two percent. If I remember the numbers, I think it was sixteen to nineteen. And sixteen, we were like out of compliance, sixty two percent. Now we're at about fifty percent in compliance. Which and then the classes and the reviews that you guys have got on all the classes. I I think you're doing a great job getting the information out. And the people appreciate it. And again, they care. They they really do care. So they come and take the class and I can tell you, one of the main drivers on what's the incentive to fix anything that might not be working right in your septic system? I've been married fifty one years and I can tell you, my wife is not going to tolerate a system that's not working. If that means the toilet doesn't flush or something, you know, is overflowing, I hear about it. I don't have to hear about it because I got a good system, but I know that my wife would be the main main one. Anyway, and then we have the time of transfer. And the time of transfer, I believe the average is every six or seven years, homes transfer ownership. And as you stated in your presentation, that does a lot for keeping track of septic systems and how they are doing. So I think that I'm going to just give an example of septic systems and fees and you talked about the energy and the crowds and such. But I'd like to just use as one example, I think it was in nineteen, there was a vote by the Summit Lake folks whether they wanted to put together a district, not necessarily to do with onsite septic, but everything in total. And that was the behind the scenes portion of it. Anyway, I want to remind everybody that the vote turned out eighty two percent of the people that were affected by that up at Summit Lake, and I think there was like six hundred or something like that. Voted not to get to move forward on anything like this. So it does generate pretty good interest in the community. I will say that this movement in sixteen propelled several people into office in seventeen. And I think that during the pandemic, it's the wrong time to move forward on this. And I think we ought to table it and look at it again next year when we're on more solid footing and see about moving forwards. That's just going to be my comments at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahia, did you have something to disjunct me?
I would I would like to keep hearing the discussion, actually. It just gives me insight on.
All right. Well, I so I'll jump in on the. Well, I, so I'll jump in on the, as the commissioner, a couple of things Commissioner Edwards said, I'll just touch on, you know, when he said, he asked if we're doing better than other counties. And if the answer that's yes, you know, great, but in August of 2018, there was a report on our surface water quality across the county. And it showed a lot of problems in 75% of our surface water. So hard for me to believe we're doing better than all the other counties. And if we are, then it's still not good enough because that's just not acceptable, especially when we look at salmon recovery and the challenges we're having recovering Puget Sound. The fact that that this element, as Art outlined, is included in the Puget Sound Action Agenda, that's a, that's a salmon recovery plan document focused on that, that area. So and then when the commissioner says that, you know, people care, people do the right thing, well, the chart that we've got shows that when people aren't required to do the, aren't required to do the, the standard maintenance that's required by law, only 35% are in compliance. So two thirds of the people aren't doing the right thing or don't care. Now, some of those might be economic hardship or other factors, but it's certainly, excuse me, far cry from 90, 95% we're shooting for. So before I dig into your three options, you just have to help me understand why I'm having trouble understanding why, as you said in the briefing, state law requires people to do three, every three years, a inspection. So rather than creating a bureaucracy to try to encourage people to do what state law already requires them to do, why don't we just let them save their $50 a year and pay it towards getting that inspection that they're required to do? Because I could understand why, if I were a law-abiding citizen who cares about water, cares about my septic system, and cares about compliance with law, the research I I found shows it's about $350 average inspection fee every three years. So I would pay that money and then the county would be charging me an extra $50 a month for a program to encourage people to do that thing that I already did. And that state law is requiring everybody to do. So instead of all that, why wouldn't we let them keep their $50 a month? Put it toward their $350 every three-year inspection and just require them to file a, you know, proof of that. Make everybody do it. This whole idea of having differentiated tiers, I don't really get. I understand why you want to grab, you want to grab the marine areas first because they have, as you say, people might be swimming there, shellfish might be infected. But we don't want sailing failing septic anywhere. And there's no reason that marine, I mean, one of the arguments I heard earlier was marine areas are older systems. They're going to fail. But all these systems, and again, I did some research on the internet on this, not an expert, so guys correct me if I got anything wrong. But these systems, according to what I read, are designed to last 20 to 25 years. So over time, whether they're new, middle or old, over time, over the long term, we're going to want everybody doing their routine maintenance. We don't want these systems to fail anywhere. I don't understand why there would be a reason to think that marine systems are going to fail. But South County systems aren't going to fail. Maybe there's more salmon, you know, recovery-related components and shellfish industry concerns. But ultimately, between groundwater and surface water, we do not want contaminated water. So in terms of how this, how the stakeholder group put together the plan to begin with, was it ever discussed? Am I just completely, is it crazy for me to think that we should just be requiring everyone to show their three-year maintenance certificate? And and get rid of all the education and pollution identification and trying to find risk areas? Just make everyone do what the law says they should do. And that'll create the result that we want, which is 90-plus percent compliance with maintenance across counties.
Boy, there's a lot there. So first, Commissioner Edwards, when he asked about, are we doing better than other counties? And I've mentioned that Henderson and Isqually, I think we're doing really, really well. Maybe if you looked at average countywide, we might be doing a little better than everybody else. But there is a big difference between our, our big focus areas, Henderson and Isqually, and and the rest of the county. And as you indicated, the slideshow that. I think there, if you look at, there's a couple of examples of counties that are probably doing better countywide, maybe more broad-based approach, as you're describing. But I'm not, I certainly am not suggesting that we, we can sit on our laurels because we're, we're doing such a good job. I think there's a lot of work to be done. The second, where was I going with the second one? I should have been taking better notes. The that, as you indicated with the slides, there is a big difference between having a regulatory-based program or program with a regulatory backstop like Henderson and Isqually, where we actually have codes that are specifically written to, that require or that provide consequences if people don't maintain things. But that does work better. The the, I think it also helps when people, you know, that I think there's also some thing where I'm paying for this stuff, so I might as well participate because it is being charged. I I don't, we don't have research to verify that, though. The issue about trying to have a program that requires people to monitor and main, you know, basically have a mandatory permit program countywide, we could do that. But recognize the reason that we talk about charging fees on property tax statements and things is because our programs are 100% fee-for-service. In other words, if in order for us to do something, to do some work, we need to have either a fee or a grant to support it. And for long-term sustainability, the way we've done that is with with fees. And that's why the charges on Henderson and Isqually is to provide that sustained funding. If we wanted to go and develop a program to require, to remind people and then ultimately have some sort of consequence for people who don't don't maintain their systems, we'd have to figure out how to pay for that. And I, you know, and
My, my, my assumption is that A, that would be a heck of a lot less expensive than some of the things we're talking about. And B, we could fund that, that the county could pay for that. You know, we wouldn't have to charge people fees. It could just be, we I'm imagining, and this is how I understood it to be in Alaska when I lived up there and I was on a septic. I understood it to be simply the borough kept the database. Yeah, and you send out a reminder card. And, you know, you get six months to get up to compliance and then, then the fee schedule comes into place then. And then there's money generated there. But, but you don't charge people for, you don't charge people unless it's absolutely necessary. And that makes them feel better because people don't like when the government puts fees on them. Like you say, they see it as a tap. You mentioned that at some point. They like the control of being able to go out and, and shop for their own septic inspector service and find a better price and find out what services they're going to get. And they feel like they're, they're helping the local economy because that's a service and a small business in the community versus writing a check to the government, which nobody seems to really like to do. And, and in this case, you've got programs where people can even learn how to do it themselves, as you've described. So I wouldn't imagine that it would be expensive for the county to simply keep a log of who's filed their expenses. Maybe I'm wrong. I know things always cost more than policymakers like to think, but it would be something that I would feel like the county would be able to fund, rather than trying to, you know, rack people with these incredibly unpopular fees and taxes.
That, I mean, and that, as far as the, we, yeah, so the, as far as doing the, having a system to track monitoring and maintenance, we have that. And so Jane and Steve know more of the nuances than I do, but we it's a, it's something that we, we have a, basically a an agreement with a vendor, someone called Online RME that allow the pumpers and people footed, put their records in. I don't know that individuals can put their records in, but it allows us to do that. So that's, that's part of it. Then the question would be how you go about setting up the the billing thing and then the evaluating the, I guess, whether the, how to do the charge stuff and, and also then setting up the program to set, I mean, to set up that program. So I hadn't, hadn't thought of that. I know we have in the past talked about kind of incentives. So is there a way legally to either reduce a fee or to not charge a fee for someone who does the right thing? And that has been, and I think you hit on a really good point, that's always been one of the issues that's come in is why I'm doing the right thing, why are you charging me? Why don't you give me something when I'm, reward me for doing the right thing? And we haven't, haven't hit on that as well. I know in the past, and I would need to do more note checking on this. When we brought up some options with our legal counsel, they said, well, you know, we don't know that we can do that. Now, that what you're describing, that might very well be possible. I don't, we haven't, haven't done that.
It's like two ways to look at it. You could say, here's a fee, but if you do your thing, you don't have to get the fee. And then, or it's like, there's no fee. You're just going to get a penalty if you don't, you know, and, and it's not, I mean, I like the simplicity of it because if the state law already requires that, it's not the county imposing anything on anyone. We're basically just, we, we, we would be, we would be functioning as the enforcement arm for the state law. That doesn't, it sounds like that doesn't exist right now. State says do that, but they don't follow up and there's no
Yeah, the way the, potentially we, someone could come after us, but our biggest risk, I think, is from a third party. So if, say, the shellfish grower thinks that we're not doing a good enough job and failing septic systems are closing shellfish harvesting areas, then a third party could go after us, I think. Not, I'll be honest, my biggest concern is of the state coming after us. But I think what you're mentioning is a, a really good concept. The, the question would be for the more complex systems or the shoreline systems where you're doing dye tracing is who does that? That's to do that work, it could take quite a bit of time to explain it, but it, when you have a shoreline area with a lot of onsite systems, it takes a long time to actually go through the process. And you can't, you don't want to do two neighboring systems at the same time because they can basically cross-contaminate each other or possibly create a false positive, if you want to use the terms for testing. Because when you put it, put dye down a, into a septic system, it could be released through drainage systems, it could be released on the bulkhead. If you've got grain fields or septic system components near each other, it could go from one to the other. So you, we basically time things out so that and the reason sometimes you'll see these data sets that say they might be multiple years' worth for a community is because it takes years to be able to go through that. We can do basically one septic system in a one out of four septic systems or one out of three septic systems in a wet season. Then next year, we do the next, or the year after that, we do the next. Jane could talk about this if you, with more detail if you'd like. And I do want to mention one other thing, though, is the reason that there is such a focus on marine areas, it's not necessarily the systems are more likely to fail, but it's when they do fail, the consequences are much greater. You know, the, you know, my septic system, I have a one-acre piece of property. It's really well-drained because I'm paranoid about septic system failures. But if it failed, it's not, the only impact is really going to be to me. But if someone who's adjacent to a shellfish harvesting area, if their system surfaces or discharges improperly-treated wastewater to the, to the bulkhead or out to the beach, then that's, that's the consequence. So that's why there's a big focus on those areas.
I understand that. And I guess I was trying to make the point, though, that I've heard the argument from multiple people that there's some kind of, that somehow it's less likely to fail. Like, you know, a failure rate from the marine area from the robust dye tracing and all that doesn't translate to some other area where there's no reason to think that, that, you know, and other than, other than the argument that marine areas have older systems, I think was one of the arguments I heard. But over, my point is that over time, there's no, you just said it, over time, there's no reason for one kind of system, one geographical area to fail more than another.
Yeah, there, I think that's mostly true. The one thing about marine areas, again, especially the properties that are on shorelines, is that sewage in, say, well, I wish I had a good graphic here, but, you know, if you live in a neighborhood where you're upland, you're surrounded by homes, it's all fairly level property. You know, the sewage that flows from, say, my home and goes, it can go underground to the neighbor's property, no one will see it. It may not surface at all. On a shoreline property, though, when it flows downhill towards the bank and the bulkhead, it can break out. It doesn't have as much vertical area or horse, it can't go as far horizontally in order to to disperse. And so that's why you'll sometime, well, you'll see higher failure rates, I think, in shoreline areas with banks. And that's where the dye tracing method's pretty, pretty good at finding those. So that you, you can see a difference in statistics that way, I think. But it's, but your bigger point, though, is that, that just by themselves, the fact that a system's on a, you know, on a shoreline area or something, doesn't make it prone. It's the, the soil depth, it's the way that people maintain the systems, it's the type of system that that really dictates its lifetime, whether it's going to fail in a few years or if it's going to live, you know, survive for years and years and years.
Whether that's true or not, the state law doesn't differentiate. It doesn't say you have to do, you have to have your system inspected every three years if you're on a marine area, but you don't.
No, the way it deals with that in part is with these management plans, is they, they say that if we do an evaluation and we find that we have areas where septic systems pose a greater risk to the public, whether, or the public health, that we can modify the monitoring and maintenance standards to reflect that. And so that's in part what we've done. But the, but if you look at just the baseline stuff in the WAC, and it says, yeah, there's two, there's two thresholds. There's the standard gravity system, and that's every three years. And then the more complex systems are supposed to be evaluated annually.
Okay, I'm going to, I got, I got more random stuff, but I'm going to flip back to Commissioner Edwards on here, if you have questions, follow up to mine or
And Jane and Steve, you're welcome to answer these, you know.
I, I do have some information for Commissioner Edwards, because my job is to make sure he gets all his questions answered.
Go for it, Steve.
2020, we had 146 repair applications submitted. Now, you're going to ask me what percent of the total that is. It is 0.27% of the total numbers of systems. Here's the disclaimer. That's re, repair applications for replacement of tanks or drain fields or such, big repairs. We've also done a lot of repairs that are considered minor repairs that fix failing systems, but do not require a permit. Now, I do not have that number readily available. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Maybe with Steve, I can follow up on this then. And how many time and transfers issues did you have?
How many time of transfer applications we processed or how many had deficiencies?
Well, I was, that was going to be my next question. How many had deficiencies?
We did in 2020, in 2020, we did 2,357 time of transfer reports and 40 resubmissions. I cannot tell you without further research how many had deficiencies.
Well, probably those 40 resubmissions, probably.
No, usually, yeah, well, maybe, maybe, yes, that, that's part. But sometimes they've submitted incorrect information to us, so the report that we have issued is incorrect. And then they notice it and they'll re-apply so they get a corrected report.
Okay.
But, but some of those certainly, sir, could be, could be corrections also.
Okay, I've got a couple of follow-ups, but I'll wait and see what Commissioner Mahia says.
Um, so thank you to both commissioners. I mean, I've, I've really, it, you know, for your questions. I, I do like Commissioner Mensah's idea about providing incentives to get our numbers up. I think if, if we're able to provide incentives, people are more likely to, to cooperate. So I, I like that, that perspective of, of things. And, and I would like to see a plan directed with, you know, with what Commissioner And, and I would like to see a plan directed with, you know, with what Commissioner Mensah said. You know, uh, incentives for people for doing the right thing. I think that's, that's a good way to go. I, I don't know, I would like to hear Commissioner Edward, if he had any opinion on, on what Commissioner Mensah said in regards to the incentives.
Well, the incentive does make sense to me. I think we do better with a carrot than we do with a stick. For, I guess that's an old saying, but, uh, anytime we can reward good behavior put that on top of my earlier statement that people care, because people really do care. And Art, I think you see that when you host all these classes, so people can learn about septic systems and, and try to do what's best. And then you couple that with the time and transfer, which, I don't know, it's roughly every six or seven years, I guess, is what I'm told. Most houses go through. I think we can be very effective in getting compliance. I just, I think right now to impose a new program as we're coming out of a COVID situation that all of us on, in this room and on this, uh, in this meeting are well-employed and doing very well. But there are a lot of people out there that are not. Uh, I would, uh, just do a follow-up that, uh, I've got residences, I've got one in particular out by me that the sys- the septic system has been in place for ninety years. As far as I know, it has only been pumped once. Works well. I'm sure it's well-maintained. I'm sure nobody's putting meth chemicals down it or bleach or whatever it might be. I think we've got plenty of adequate regulation in place to carry us through. If you want me to get into particulars, if we follow our own regulation, I've got a place out by me that, uh, a permit was given to build a house in a crick, in a, in a seasonal crick. Got a septic tank put in there for years. A prior party was told, no, you can't do anything there. There's a crick there. What makes you think you should do anything? But yet we as government issued those permits necessary to have that done. You'd think that'd be done without a permit, maybe I'd be talking about. Oh, no. No, it was all done with permits. So let's pay attention to what we're doing and not try to create a new program right now. While, uh, the community is in flux as to what is beneficial and what is not, and those that are struggling and those that are not. So all I'm asking for is let's look into some kind of a carrot. That's fine. Uh, I'm all for it. But let's not try to think about going into, uh, charging septic system. I can tell you, for those of you that weren't there, uh, you talk about hostility being developed. It gets developed at those meetings, and I'm sure Art sat through that and experienced some of it. So I just don't think the timing's right to move forward with a whole nother permitting government bureaucracy scheme to take money away from people that are trying to just get by. And boy, when it comes to affordable housing, let's not keep adding on to the problem. So I think we're doing pretty good. I see the county manager's got his hand up there.
Wait a minute.
Just to provide a, um, uh, some thoughts. And, uh, the first thing I'd like to probably ask the board is, uh, is the performance of the county related to the implementation of the septic management plan, is the right approach to benchmark ourselves against other jurisdictions? Or should we benchmark ourselves how effective we are to improve our water quality? And, and this is more, more, more of a philosophical question that I'd like to ask the board. It sounds like, um, uh, what I'm hearing is perhaps is option D, the Commissioner Mensah is, is proposing. Is whether we go with that requirement for inspections, that brings a, an enforcement and penalty component to that approach? Or the incentives, uh, option also they brings, in either way, there is going to be a financial impact. We're talking about fifty-four thousand septic systems. And the management of, of, of enforcement penalties and incentives, it has to be a financial element that needs to be considered. Because I, what type of incentives, uh, are we looking at? Because I don't think an incentive will be to send a, a congratulatory, congratulatory letter to those who does the right thing. So either way, I think it's going to be a financial element, uh, the, the board needs to consider as we move ahead. And I encourage the board, great discussion today. I think there's a good option D. But I, I'd recommend for you to continue to have those conversations as opposed to just reach a conclusion today.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I, I'm searching, so, I mean, I don't have any predefined right answer. I'm searching for the best result for the least, you know, controversial and onerous financial burden on the citizen. When I see that state law requires an inspection every three years, and that's what we're trying to achieve, then I don't want to create a whole program to try to, to try to, you know, that's just going to add fees on top of that. That's already a substantial amount of money for a lot of people, you know, annualize that, that's like a hundred and fifteen dollars a year, essentially, that people are paying to have a septic and get, and at a minimum, because there's times where they're going to need repair potentially and stuff. But at an absolute minimum, that's what they're, that's what state law says they should be paying. We have to be mindful of piling on that. But I think it's reasonable to expect people to do that because it's extremely important for water quality. It, it keeps them in compliance with state law. It, it, it helps. I, I just think that it makes sense. I mean, I, you know, you get a reminder postcard, hey, you got, you know, we need your, uh, we need proof of your, uh, inspection. You got six months to do it. Call up some, some companies, Foster's local business, get the inspection, file it, county checks off the box on the spreadsheet. That's it. There doesn't have to be a lot of rigmarole, uh, and bureaucracy around it, or government fees or government, um, programs, as Commissioner Edwards said. I want to make this as simple as possible, but I think that the balance of simplicity plus compliance, like the compliance percentages that you would get, um, I think would shoot way up. Obviously, that depends on what kind of incentive or what kind of penalty is at the end of the road for, for just blowing it off. And that's, we'd have to discuss that. But I'm open-minded to any approach. I just, it just seems like reading this, and I, I, I respect all the work that's going here. I wasn't in here. I was, you know, people are trying to find, you know, the right way to approach you, but it just seems like so much rigmarole for, for, for mediocre compliance rates. And then, and, and then, and now the, the proposal is to tack on what's going, we, we all acknowledge is going to be a very controversial proposal for a fee. That's not, it's still not going to guarantee folks have to comply. It's just, you know, tier two, okay, education, you know, get a reminder. It's like, that's, I don't think that's, that's kind of what we've been doing. And we saw that as Art showed the statistics, we got about a ten or eleven percent bump in compliance from all that education effort of two years, um, once, when the fee was rescinded. So I, I don't think that's good enough. I mean, twenty-six percent to thirty-seven percent, we're, we're shooting for ninety, you know? We're not going to get to ninety through that, but we're also going to create a firestorm of controversy if we just create a government program and bureaucratic program. So I'm searching for, you know, a different way of going about it that might feel less heavy-handed to the citizen, but yet get us closer to our goal.
Yeah, uh, uh, just to maybe clarify my statement, um, I am not here to, um, advocate for any particular option, whether it's A, B, C, another new D. I'm not here to advocate for you to go ahead and implement the fee as your prerogative, uh, as a commissioners. I'm just trying to be mindful in terms of if it's any potential option the board likes to do and create a set of expectations. I, I, I mean, we have the obligation to bring forth as to how we're going to be able to meet those expectations based on the current conditions. And, and that's really, uh, my, my, my point of, of, of the comments that I made. And again, uh, I want to be extremely clear that I'm not here to advocate whether you should implement a fee or not. But i- i- it is, uh, as we move forward, if it's a set of expectations the commission has put for, for in the staff, I think we need to be in the position to make sure that we are able to deliver those, those expectations.
Art, you, um, something I had written down in my notes was, and I'm not finding it here, but it said that, um, in the septic management plan, I think it was option one, if there was a fee, it was going to replace some other, like, set of fees. And I was just kind of wondering what, what the net result would be for folks. Like if they're paying forty-five dollars or fifty dollars, but then they're not paying, there were some other fees listed there. And I, I wasn't sure how that balanced out. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Ooh, I'm kind of trying to think of.
It said it in here twice. It said that the proposal, this might have been going back to twenty sixteen or the proposal was that it would, there'd be a fee, but it would replace other fees.
Right. Um, so the, the concept there is right now, um, in, for most of the county is that we've, uh, when you have the time of transfer process, when you're selling your, your home, you have the system, the septic tank pumped, you have, turn in a report, or your, uh, pumper turns in that report. You turn in an application to the county, and we look at our records to determine whether, you know, the, there's inconsistencies in the records and also to evaluate that. So that's, that's one of the things that was originally recommended or recommended in the, um, plan is that the, the, the charge on the property tax statement would cover those sorts of services. You wouldn't have to pay separately for it.
Yeah, I, I found it. It says, the committee recommended that the flat fee would replace current ONM fees, pump report fees, time of transfer application fees, and MRA septic charges.
Right. Yeah. So thank you for reminding me of that. It was, yeah. So for, again, for the people who have complex onsite systems, they are also obligated to, um, have a renewable permit. And there's a surprise, there's a fee for that. So when they turn in the information that they need to show, uh, whether their system's in compliance or not, there's a fee because we're, you know, evaluating that information. We're doing quality assurance checks on some percentage of those, at least we hope that we can. And then that's helping to pay for, you know, the, the infrastructure within the, within the program. So, so the idea was, uh, that if all those services or all those activities were covered with the flat fee, that people would believe that was a, a, a better value and, and would support it.
Part, part of what that ONM fee pays for is a staff person to look at the report that comes in and note that, one, it has come in and to check to see if there's any deficiencies that then need following up. And if so, follow up with them. So we do that pretty rigorously for those who require operational certificates. We are stretched and mostly not able to do that very carefully with the rest of the county. The other seventy-two or whatever it is percent of the systems out there. We, we attempt to look at those, but we don't always get to it because we don't have enough people.
One of the, one of the things that the data system that we have allows is that if someone says the system's failing, it'll basically put a red flag on it, which allow, whether it's, um, in the marine recovery area or elsewhere. Is that correct, Jane and Steve?
It, it doesn't automatically do that. We have to do that.
Okay. There's a way to retrieve that information. In an ideal world, we'd be following up on all the, the questionable ones.
Which is what our grant is attempting to do, is expand where we're able to follow up to, again, the areas we can get funding through grants, which right now are shellfish areas.
Thank you. Uh, okay, fifteen minutes left. I'm going to circle back to commissioners, um, during the final question, should we hear? No?
I, I guess I'd just mention one other thing there. Uh, you know, I, I think, Steve, those numbers that you said the hundred and forty-six or something out of the fifty thousand or whatever it is, I think it's twenty-seven hundredths of a percent or something. But regardless, we're trying to do regulatory enactment that no matter how you look at it, it's going to cost money. And I just want to remind everybody that there is still a philosophy afoot that wants to make it difficult for anyone to live in the unincorporated area of Thurston County outside the urban growth area. I mean, it's real. There, there's a goal afoot there. Uh, maybe it's a good thing to think about for the future. I don't think we'll be thinking about it right now, though. Uh, we can always plan for that. But I think it's such a small percentage that we're going to point at that there's a problem when really there is no problem. This was sold, this was attempted to be sold, uh, to the public back in sixteen based on a fourteen percent failure rate. And I think, uh, I've got a letter in front of me here from the county manager. I think it refers to, uh, point two percent or something in the end. Yeah, point two percent. Anyway, uh, that was corrected. So I, I applaud staff for doing a good job. I want to refer to, uh, Art's puzzle here, if you will, and think about, uh, all those other issues that come into play. And, uh, uh, one of my pet peeves, and you've all heard this, I don't know if Commissioner Mahia has heard this or not, but all through the Cascade Mountain Range, you know, the private industry is dumping hundreds of millions of tons of chemicals on the forest to make them grow faster. And, uh, I, I think that's eventually as detrimental as we can think of. And here we are talking about penalizing a citizen for, uh, having an onsite system that he wants to live out and, and, uh, enjoy the American dream, if you will. So I'm all for putting together some kind of, of a, uh, incentive program. I think that's great. I just don't think the timing is right, that we should be scaring the public into the fact that we're now reopening another bureaucratic process to develop some charging process to cause more grief, especially for those citizens that are affected the worst. So that's, that's all. I mean, I, and, and with the comments the county manager made, I think he's probably right. We're, we're not here today to make that decision. We're just having our discussion. And then I'm open. I'd like to hear more about a, a, uh, incentive program of some type as time goes on.
So, um, I would encourage Commissioner Mahia because she hasn't seen this. We don't have time to get into it today. But I was, I was convinced that, um, septic's are a real issue, not by any of the data that Commissioner Edwards is referring to, but presentations I've seen where I call it the two maps. Because if you, you, you can put up a map of where the water quality testing has shown water quality issues on surface waters across the county. And then you can put up another map or overlay it, if you have that technology, of where, um, its concentration of septic's are. And it's basically the exact same map. So the idea that, um, there's no issue is just, I mean, unless somebody can explain that to me in a way that they haven't in the last three years that I've been looking at this issue. It, it's one piece of the puzzle, but it is a, is a significant piece of the puzzle. And the, the, the chemical application, I mean, we, Commissioner Edwards has been bringing this up. And so we asked, uh, our, our staff to do water quality testing at each point above the, um, uh, above the, uh, you know, the Shute Falls Park to try to test that theory, and it, it didn't, it didn't bear out that that was the source of the water quality issues along the shoots further down. So, um, I, I haven't seen any data to back that up, although, you know, it certainly was concerning on its face. But we haven't seen the water quality data to back that up. But if you look at the concentration of septic's, how they connect to the water quality issues, it's a match. It's a perfect match just about. So we, we really do need to address this. And the question is how? And we've been going around and around. I mean, you know, it's been two years now, uh, and I'm in my third year. And again, I'm not married to any one approach. I want to take the least onerous, um, on, on our, on our citizens. But I am really insistent that we find a way to move the needle forward. I promised to do this to the people when I campaigned for commissioner. I do the things that I say I'm going to do. And I do not want to be out on the campaign trail next year saying, what have you done, Commissioner Mensah, to? Commissioner Mensah, to address the issue of the septic's and their impact on water quality? And right now, I'd have to say I've done nothing because that's where, that's where we've, that's what has occurred and unfolded over the last two years. So I'm going to be looking for ideas from my seatmates as to how we move this needle forward in in the most palatable way, affordable way, and effective way possible.
Chair, could I make a comment?
Yep.
In regard to the testing from the forest, I had asked the question when that had taken place, if that had been coordinated with the dates of application by the industry? And that had not taken place. There had been no coordination. And I contend that the problem is it's applied during the rainy season. It passes through right to the Puget Sound and causes our water problem that goes into the water table. And it's not always there and and not always prevalent. So I don't think that we. Pardon?
That was, that testing was done over a year.
No, what, no, but they only do the application. They only do the application at certain times of the year. And that application test was, the test was never taken place while the application was taken place, while while the application of the chemicals was taken place.
But if that chemical could have had the detrimental effect that we see time and time again when we test the water down to the shoots, you wouldn't, you would have caught it at least one, you would have caught at least one data point with that effect being evident. And at no point was it shown.
It's my, my understanding was taken month to month. And if it didn't happen to be at the right time, we weren't going to get it. I would, I would.
You think that has this massive effect and then every month, every like week or two, it just flushes out and then the water quality's perfect? And that, that doesn't, I asked those follow up questions in that briefing and that's not what was explained. We would have caught evidence of that on one of those tests that we did over that year.
Okay. This is Art, so I'd be happy to, oh, I'll let Jane, because I think she's going to say the same thing I was going to.
I was going to say, one of the things about nutrients, both nitrogen and phosphorus, is it is a problem in many streams across the county, no matter the location. To shoots falls, it has not, it has not been high levels there. But it is consistently high levels in many streams across the county. And if we want to do follow up or I can get you more information, I'm happy to do that.
And I was going to say that that Commissioner Edwards is correct that we do monthly sampling. And since the last time we talked about this, we have more data. But what Mr. Mensah's also is saying is also correct is that when you have an application of fertilizers and things, they do take a while to work through the system. So it's, you know, if if there was a, an abuse of application or abusive application, we would expect to see impacts from that for quite a while. But but to get to Commissioner Edwards' point, I don't know that we know exactly when they've applied either. So but we can do some research on that.
I happen to know exactly. I keep track of it when they apply. So if you want to coordinate with me, I'll be glad to help you. But.
You do have a unique location for keeping track of that.
Yes, I do. The helicopters fly right over me. I wish all of you could see the optics of those big bags of fertilizer, millions of tons throughout the Cascades in the last 50 years. I couldn't even get in front of the ORCA committee when they were talking about what the problem was with the ORCA. And I knew some of the players down there. I believe it's corporate greed. Nobody wants to take on the big corporate industries and we're no different. But I would encourage anybody that questions whether or not nitrates being overly applied have a detrimental effect, take a look at a satellite photo of the Mississippi River and the delta down by the Mississippi. It's all directly related to ag activity. It's killing the river. Now, should they do something about it? I think they should. Does corporate want to do anything? No. Does Congress do anything? No. So I just take exception to saying that that is not a problem. I'm talking about millions of tons over the last 50 years. And as far as the water quality, where where the groundwater is affected by nitrates, for an example, there's a good example down along Scatter Creek in which a big development, about 100 homes in there, pretty close packed together, I don't know, one acre lots or whatever they are. That water quality was high in nitrates mainly because of manure gun activity and farm application of nitrates on fields. It was all ag. Since they put those homes in and the onsite septic systems are in place, the nitrate levels are less, the nitrate levels are less now than they were when that was a farm. So I'll just throw that in as a piece of information. I know we got a lot of more discussion to do. And Chair, you and I will have some more discussions on it. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Could I suggest a step forward, Commissioner?
Sorry, yep, go ahead, Maia.
So as expected, this is a very good conversation. It always brings some good energy among the commissioners. And so give us some time to put some thought on what I call option D. That is the the requirement for inspections, whether it's an enforcement component or an incentive component. So let us put some thoughts with the staff as to what options or perhaps some suggestions and ideas behind that is. And then we'll come back with another briefing, well, where we will be revisiting. Again, option A is pretty obvious, the flat fee. Option B is the tier fee. And option C is nothing, or continuous as business as usual. And then the new option D, as I heard today.
And I would like to just point out, doing nothing is not maybe one of the options. Business as usual, maybe it is. I'm talking about a delay before we do much because let's take, let's consider the pandemic. That's all I'm asking and people in need. So thank you.
That's it.
You know, I'm always, I'm always amenable to soft launches of things, phasing things in, you know, delay, giving people time to educate. So I'm very open to approaches as long as I feel that we're, we're looking long term and we're moving the needle forward. So I appreciate everybody's time today. It was good.
Yeah, what I'm suggesting is, you know, to give us some time is not going to be months. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be moving forward as soon as, as soon as we can.
Very good.
Thank you very much. And I will do talk, I will also talk to our legal counsel about some of the concepts you talked about fee why and charging stuff because that's, it ends up being kind of a key consideration.
Okay.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.